Six o'clock Tuesday, December 6th, and we will call the community notification meeting to order. Shannon, call the rule.
Mr. Scofetti?
Here.
Ms. McPherson?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Sorese?
Here. Okay, next we have a presentation by Larry Finch. Larry.
Anyone counsel, guests in the audience, this meeting is basically to provide information to the community regarding our application to the US EPA Brownfield Cleanup Program related to asbestos mitigation at the property commonly referred to as the old school. We have been trying to resolve issues with that property for many years. We made this application last year. Last year was a heavy funding period for this particular grant program. More than 670 applications were submitted, only 217 were funded. Of course, we were not in the 217, but I was encouraged by US EPA to try again. And we've gone back, we've tweaked our application, and we've had some discussions with these some property owners, and I think we have a stronger application this year. And the purpose of this meeting is basically to primarily for the benefit of neighborhood residents and adjacent property owners and the impacted public. The purpose of this program is to help them understand what the process is and what the potential hazards or mitigation issues might be. I have on the table up here, and actually, I probably should put them back there, a brief agenda, which has a US EPA Brownfield Cleanup Program general description attached to that. Following that is a question form, a blank US EPA Brownfield Cleanup Grant question form for the public to fill out in case they have concerns or questions they realize after this meeting they want to get something to us. We'll respond to those up until the time the application goes in. The application is due on December 20th. So I encourage anybody who has a concern or a question regarding the process after we go through this meeting tonight, to by all means, if you think of something later, you can certainly send it in. I encourage anybody who wants to make a comment, who has a concern about the issue, to come to the podium and let us know what your concerns or comments might be, and we will do that right after I go through the general process. Also included in the information that we have for distribution is a draft alternative Brownfield Cleanup Analysis. It's basically a summary of what I'm going to talk about today. So those are available for somebody to take with them. They'll also be available to counsel immediately after the meeting. So, I'm just going to go through the general program, the process for the grant, and talk a little bit about the impacts and why we are going after the amount and what we are intending to do with that grant money. So first of all, we can apply to the US EPA for up to $200,000 of funds. We have to have a 20% local match. So those two criteria are basically what we're going to be limited to in the program. Okay, the purpose of this meeting specifically, it's required by US EPA, and the purpose is to involve the local community and targeted area stakeholders in the planning and implementation of the project. So that, basically, what we're talking about here is the local community targeted area stakeholders. So first of all, what is the project? The project is the removal of asbestos from the old school building. It's a 54,000 square foot building. Part of it was built in 1921, the rest was constructed in 1952. We looked at three different alternatives for asbestos removal. The three alternatives were no action, which basically is not doing anything, leaving the property stand as it is. The second is removal of asbestos-containing materials and friable asbestos-containing materials. This allows, by the second process, you leave in place the non-friable materials, so something that can't be broken or to free the asbestos in the material can remain in place. You can encapsulate asbestos-containing materials that are not likely to be disturbed. Floor tiles that are solid and can be covered by another floor are examples of these kinds of materials. Or you can encapsulate asbestos-containing materials not likely to be disturbed by building updates. So that's the limitation of the second alternative. The third alternative we looked at is removal of all asbestos-containing materials and trace materials that contain asbestos. No asbestos-containing materials remain to interfere with the reuse or demolition of the property after this alternative. It's, you know, more invasive, it gets all the asbestos out, and is a situation where you don't have to worry about coming back in later, either if you wanted to reuse the property and modify it again, or if you wish to redevelop the property. So, it allows, the project would be then the cleanup and preparation of the site for future development, primarily with this grant being the asbestos mitigation. Okay, who are the stakeholders? The stakeholders, I listed them in order by my interpretation of order in terms of importance, by their proximity and by potential impact to these, to the stakeholders. Obviously, the adjacent property owners are the primary impacted stakeholders. They're adjacent to the building, they could be impacted by friable asbestos that is airborne, they could be impacted by any activity at the building, whether it's demolition or reconstruction. So the adjacent property owners are the ones who basically pay the price of the building being there as is, or will be concerned primarily about the method of asbestos mitigation and if any asbestos would be freed by the activity. Second, the businesses and tenants that are situated in adjacent commercial properties. Like the property owners, the tenants who lease those properties have a vested interest in remaining healthy and safe. Thirdly, the city is a property owner. We are a stakeholder here because we own the property, it's our obligation to deal with it, and we have to deal with it in a responsible manner. Fourth, nearby residents. There, in this situation, there really aren't residents nearby, and I'll show you that in a little bit. And then lastly, the community at large. Community at large is a stakeholder in that, you know, the city owns this property, residents have some influence in terms of what happens in the city through the council. Okay, what is the extent of the existing asbestos-containing materials in the building? There is a substantial amount, it's in both sections, the old section and the new section. And it is in the glazing compound of the windows throughout the, both sides. It's in the bulletin board mastic, primarily on bulletin boards on the old section of the building. It's in floor tiles throughout the building and floor mastic throughout the building. It's in the built-up roof above the old section of the building, which currently is not in very good shape. It's in the sealers and caulking in the parapet walls. Again, chalkboard mastic, duct insulation in the HVAC system, and the pipe insulation, duct insulation, window caulk, door caulk, and mastic in other locations throughout both sides of the building. The amounts of asbestos in terms of square feet are indicated on the right. That adds up to, you know, a substantial amount, 60-plus thousand square feet of asbestos containing material. Okay, what are the requirements for cleanup? ACMs or asbestos-containing materials that have less than 1% asbestos require notification to workers who might be involved in exposing or working with that material, so that it can be handled and managed in a responsible manner. So there are risks to the individuals who might be working on those properties, so if the asbestos-containing materials are there, it requires notification to anybody working on the property. Regulated asbestos-containing materials, which are those that have more than 1% by volume, or category one and category two materials have to be removed from the building with any major overhaul of the building. They have to be removed by an Ohio Department of Health certified asbestos contractor. And the Ohio, the Summit County Air Quality Authority also is involved in this process when ACMs and category one and category two materials are present. Non-friable ACM material may be permitted to remain, those are the ones I was talking about, that are solid, they're constructed well, they are not broken, it's not likely that the asbestos in the material would be freed, you know, and become airborne unless it were damaged by a contractor doing work on that particular element. But the non-friable ACMs, if undisturbed, they can remain in place, but they still have to be handled and disposed of after the fact in accordance with the Ohio Department of Health regulations and with the federal and state regulations applicable to asbestos. So basically, you have three categories of material. You have those that are less than 1% asbestos-containing material, and you have those that are more than 1% asbestos-containing material in the category one, category two materials. And then between those, non-friable ACMs, which can be permitted to remain in place. So the probable cost, based on old estimates that we've had, and we'll contract for an update of these estimates prior to the actual activity. But for the alternate that involves no action, of course, there's no cost associated with no action, well, none directly anyway. There would be an indirect cost to adjacent property owners, to the property values in the area, and to the long-term cost of finally dealing with it when we come to the conclusion that we have to deal with it. Alternate two would require specifications be prepared for the removal of asbestos material, including those that might be either isolated or encapsulated. The contractor's costs are estimated between $150,000 to $200,000. And all this is in a range because we don't know exactly what the cost might be because we don't have a specific building improvement plan to be estimating from. So these are best estimates for the extent of the issue we're facing. With that, there would also be oversight and final reporting and clearance of the project to US EPA for a total cost of about $236,000. So then with alternative three, which is the removal of all asbestos-containing materials, we would have the preparation of specifications slightly lower cost because we don't have to worry about which pieces are encapsulated or contained. All of the asbestos-containing materials are removed, so the specifications are much simpler to draw up. Contractor's cost is a little bit more because he's removing more material, and this actually could be less, but I've estimated it high for a reason. There also is a little bit less oversight and clearance associated with the total asbestos removal. The pieces are coming out in larger chunks, like windows would be removed in total. There would be no attempt to remove caulking from a window or caulking from a door frame, which is more labor-intensive. So those things would be removed as a unit. So the oversight from the construction inspection would be less. So total cost would be estimated at about $250,000 for this alternative. I tried to rank these based on a number of characteristics and factors. One is how easy it is to implement, the effective mitigation of the hazard, future regulatory burdens associated with visiting the property again to deal with it in the future, adaptive reuse potential of the structure, community image, which really is an important issue concerning this particular area because it's in the central area of our community, costs, and future use potential. Implementability, obviously, it's no benefit if we don't do anything. Alternate two has a very good ranking relative to being implementable. Alternate five is probably equal to alternate, yeah, alternate two. But it's more intrusive to the building, so I just gave that a five in terms of the ranking. Effective mitigation of the hazard, of course, alternate one is no action, so there's no benefit to the hazard. Alternate two doesn't remove all the hazard, it removes those that might be friable or represent an immediate hazard, but those that are still in the building that are not friable and can be contained would have to be dealt with at a later date. Alternate three would deal with all the mitigation, all the hazard, so there would be no mitigation required in the future, so it would be ranked higher. The future regulatory burden, it's a lot like the effective mitigation of the hazard. If the hazard's not been mitigated, it's not going to have a benefit. The more we remove, the less regulatory burden and the higher the benefit. Adaptive reuse potential of the building, alternate one, the building as it stands has a minimal adaptive reuse potential. I think we all realize that, there are some structural issues with the building, there are a number of significant structural issues with the building, there are condition issues with the building, there are cost issues with the building, the building has space limits and ineffective spaces within the building that limit the building to no more than 40%, 46% actual leasable area as it's currently structured, without moving walls or building new floors or major, major issues like that. So the current adaptive reuse potential of alternate one would be very minimal. Alternate two would be a moderate reuse potential. Alternate three, I think, would be moderate or higher because the property would then be easier to turn over to another use or to demolish. Community image, there's no benefit to no action, there is an equal benefit likely to adaptive reuse potential and to total mitigation. The costs, costs are, long-term cost, well, the immediate cost, let me put it this way, the immediate cost of no action is zero. So if you look at it in one way, that's great benefit because you're not doing anything. On the other hand, that just puts the problem off to a later date. So this is really kind of a, it depends on how you look at this particular item. With alternate two, the cost is going to be pretty high, but not as high as the full demolition or the full mitigation scenario as alternate three. Future use potential, again, with alternate one, there'll be a minimal reuse potential unless there's substantial other activity and improvements done to the building. Alternative two would have a good reuse potential, provided there was somebody who's interested in a building that only had 46% leasable space. And alternate five would have the maximum reuse potential because the building would be cleared of all asbestos-removing material and would be easily utilized for other purposes. So if we sum those up, the alternate number three, even conservatively ranking the cost and other issues, is still the highest-ranked alternative and is the preferred alternative. So what's the target area associated with the project impact? This is the view from the square looking to the southeast. You can see the, Gaijentoli's Real Estate Office right here, the Chase Banks on the corner, and just out of view right here is the first of Regis Brown's property, and you can just barely see the old school structure right here. So the target area actually associated with the project is this immediate environment. It's not the entire area of the community, it's the area that's being impacted by the asbestos mitigation and potential reuse. Again, you can see from a slightly different angle over the real estate office to the old, old school property. If you look at it from an aerial view, the target area associated with the project, I've outlined in orange the rough boundary of the old school property, which is 5.1 acres. You can see that there are no residential properties around it whatsoever. Actually, there's very little around it. There's the old post office, which functions as a daycare, so there's some concern for the daycare. There's the drugstore, the Chase Bank facility, the real estate office, and commercial leased spaces in these older residential buildings. So the immediate environs and the potential impact, the target area of impact, is this immediate area around the asbestos, the activity for asbestos mitigation that would occur in the building. Similarly, I think any further impact would be primarily impacting this area in terms of demolition, dust, dirt, noise, all those other things. Those impacts would be confined primarily to this area. So in conclusion, the project will directly impact the adjacent property owners primarily, and there are no residential units within the immediate proximity or actually within some distance of this particular project. Asbestos mitigation activities will be performed by state-licensed contractors, that would be overseen by the local air quality authority, by EPA, the local office of EPA, a city's certified professional consultant that we have to have, we have to hire one to do this project, and the building department. So there would be substantial oversight of any asbestos mitigation activity. The most complete and appropriate mitigation alternative is total ACM removal from a planning perspective. The least cost long-term, if you look at a long-term cost, where you're dealing with all the issues associated with it, the least long-term cost would be the total removal of asbestos. We'd be dealing with it in today's cost and in totality, whereas if we dealt with only the partially ACM removal, we'd have immediate cost of a lesser amount, would you have a higher cost at a later date, which likely would also be higher inflated cost at a later date. The affected stakeholders would be least impacted and most benefited by the total ACM removal alternative. So that's basically a quick summary of what we intend to do or what the application is all about. The process of asbestos removal, as I said, would be handled by certified and licensed contractors with this particular skill. And these kinds of projects are burdened with substantial oversight by a number of different agencies, including the air quality authority, US EPA, Ohio PA, and our local laws and regulations. So that's a brief summary of the project, of the application, what our intent is, and the amount that we are applying for. I would like to ask anybody from the public who has a comment or concern, would like to ask them to come to the microphone and provide that comment or concern for the benefit of the council and for the benefit of the city. Thank you.
Been a while since I've had this book out, but give me just a couple minutes to get a few things together here. I was told a while ago by someone, it's not what I say, but how I say things. And I'm consciously working, last time we went through this, three years ago, I was aggressive, angry, confrontational, trying to put that aside, trying to work a little bit better and smoother with people. I had a meeting about a month or so ago, maybe a month and a half, with Mr. Yates, and we sat down and we discussed a few things about what our Twinsburg Old School Committee would like to do for the city regarding this manner. We have a lot of strong resources, strong people in our group. What we want to do is put together this package. We are obviously against any kind of demolition or abatement at this point, and I'll get to that. What we want to do is, we want to put together a nice, big, pretty package for you guys. This is what we can do with this building. This is how we can have it done with the contractors. This is the grants that we can get to not only get the abatement, or to get the asbestos abated, but to also get renovation costs covered. There's a lot of grants and stuff out there. We have several examples on our Facebook Old School page of buildings that are in far worse shape than our building, that are now thriving, productive buildings in their community. This is what we want to do, we want to put all this stuff together, how we can do it, what we can do, and as much as anything, why we should do it. This would be a great asset to our community, it has been a great asset to our community for a long time. To knock this building down for another shopping center and cluster homes is absolutely absurd with all of the vacancies we have in our existing shopping plazas. You're going to see major blight pop open in Giant Eagle, people are going to bail out of there, and you're going to have a blighted shopping center over there. The Cluster Homes just got shot down over at 91 in Glenwood, and we want to ram more Cluster Homes and Shopping Center through the CIC, which, don't get me started on CIC, that'll go off on a whole tangent on that. But what we want to do, like I'm saying, is we want to put together this whole package for you guys, we want to do all the work, we want to do everything, and we want to hand this thing to you guys and say, this is what can be done. We have several examples of other old school buildings just like this. Euclid has a facility three times the size of ours, they have 98% occupancy in this building, it's leased out. And this building serves their community, they estimate that it brings $3 million a year into their local economy. I went to a place in Cuyahoga Falls, has been in existence since 1986, they just celebrated their 30-year anniversary, this building was built in 1930-something, same exact thing, they took a building, made a nice community center out of this building. Serves their community well, there are examples that this can work, I'm sorry, am I interrupting you guys here? I would appreciate your attention.
Go ahead.
I want to make sure that we're on the right page. Yes, yes, I'm, this is my time at the mic, sir, thank you.
This is about asbestos.
Yes, and I'm getting there for the reason, you'll understand the reason.
It's not about use of the building, Colonel.
So there are, there are plenty of examples as to why this building should not be demolished, does that help?
This is not about demolition.
This is absolutely about demolition, I saw demolition up there how many times?
This is about applying for an asbestos grant.
Mr. Finch, are we looking for demolition for this building? Didn't you say that the ultimate, that the ultimate decision was demolition? So, please let me have my time, sir.
But, Mr. Turrell.
Please let me have my time, I don't interrupt you when you're speaking.
You know what, I'm going to have to sit down in a minute, okay? This is about applying for the asbestos grant.
Yes, and I'm getting there, sir. If you will allow me to speak, you will hear about this.
This is not about the use of the building.
This is about the use of the building.
It's about applying for a grant to, for abatement for asbestos.
And these are the reasons that we should not abate the asbestos at this point, because when you abate asbestos for demolition, or when you abate asbestos for repurpose and reuse, they are two completely different processes. And that is what I'm here to talk about.
And you're licensed to tell us that.
I'm not licensed to tell us that, but after 35 years in construction, I know a little bit more about it than other people.
I have a point of order.
I've got a point of order. I've got a point of order.
No, no, you don't.
Yeah, I do.
We have a point of order, let me just read to you.
No. You know what, I say no. Please sit down.
Do I have a point of order from the council? It's a point of order.
Are we here to hear from the public or not?
Yes, but we're here to speak on asbestos abatement, whether we apply for the grant.
And I am getting to asbestos abatement.
What your thoughts are on us applying for the grant.
I don't like it.
Okay, that's what we need to hear, now.
Okay, you want to hear why?
Well, I know you don't like it.
I'm going to tell you why. Are you going to let me tell you why, or are you going to keep interrupting me?
We're not here to talk about whether we demolish it or whether we rebuild it.
Are you going to keep interrupting me, are you going to let me speak, Council President?
I'm going to let you speak, but you need to speak on the topic.
I am on the topic of Twinsburg Old School.
Please stay on topic.
I am on topic.
Stay on topic.
I am on topic, thank you, sir.
I have a point of order that should be addressed.
Go ahead, Mr. Turrell.
So there are many reasons that this building can be repurposed and reused without this asbestos abatement for demolition. Thank you for your attention, Mr. Scofetti. Mr. Finch spoke about the stakeholders. Stakeholders, he listed as the community, dead last out of five people. Who pays for that building? Who pays for the maintenance? Who pays for the demolition that you guys want? Is it going to be the surrounding neighbors? Well, yeah, to a point, but it is the entire community of Twinsburg. Who is going to enjoy in the benefits of that building? The people around it? Well, yes, but the entire community? Absolutely, yes. So who is a stakeholder? So I have to say no to Mr. Finch's comment of the community at large being dead last in that. We are the number one stakeholders. We are the number one stakeholders in this thing, because it is our property, all of our property. He spoke of structural issues. I don't know if we've had some kind of report that I didn't get, but then again, there's a lot of information that flies around that I'm not privy to unless I ask for it. And if I don't get it, if I don't know to ask for something, you guys sure don't offer it. We applied for this grant last year. Nobody heard anything. Did we get the grant? Did we not get the grant? I believe it was Mr. Fury about a month ago at a council that asked, what was it? You, Mr. Fury?
We did not get the grant.
I know we didn't get the grant, because I got the email here, but you didn't, nobody knew about it until a month or so ago, maybe six weeks, when you asked about it, what happened with the grant? And Mr. Finch said, "We did not get the grant because," excuse me, sir, thank you, because Mr. Finch said-
Make your statement.
Mr. Finch said, "We did not get the grant because there were so many people that had applied for it, we didn't get it." And I got a copy of the letter. "I regret to inform you, your proposal was not selected because it did not score high enough on the ranking criteria established." That's why we didn't get the grant, because it did not rank high enough. So a little bit of selective information coming out, quite possibly. Mr. Finch also listed different places where the asbestos was located. One of them was in the chalkboard mastic. When I was in there for the Kent State demolition, I saw chalkboards that were ripped right off and mastic there. Did we have asbestos abatement crews in there removing those chalkboards? I don't recall hearing of any of that, so what's the deal with that there? So I tried to present to you what our future committee wants to do to help preserve this building, but I was not allowed to present that. But we want to put together a nice package, and it is obvious that the city is dead set against this still, even after my meeting with Mr. Yates, which we had a very nice, pleasant conversation, much nicer than what I have going over here. Thank you, Mr. Yates. But he honestly, truthfully, calmly informed me that this is not the direction that the city wants to go. This is the reason that I am highly against this abatement grant, because all it does is make it easier for the city to tear down at this point. I have very strong concerns about council not wanting to reverse their decision on this demolition. Even if everything is put to you all nice and pretty and rosy, and this is going to be so easy, I don't see, I'm scared to death that we could do all this work and do a great thing, put together a really nice thing for you guys, do all the work. And all you got to do is say, "Yeah, okay, let's look into this. Let's investigate this," because you don't want to reverse your plans. That's proven on this roundabout. People didn't want this thing, we're doing it anyhow. Rezoning, people voted it down. We're doing it again. It got voted down even worse the second time. Golf clubhouse, people don't want the clubhouse, we're doing it. And Old School is just another one of these things. Mr. Finch said there's no interest in it. All of you, except for two council members, were here at that point in time when we were going through this in 2013. And there was a lot of people out here. We had 50 to 60 people in here for an architectural review board meeting. You're lucky to get two or three people. We had 50 or 60 people for an ARB meeting. And that was the time that the demolition got shot down, first time in the city of Twinsburg's history. I spoke about Mr. Finch's stakeholders, structural issues. I don't know about the camera angles of the pictures he took are a little crazy, picked the absolute worst. I got plenty of pictures. What about the angle from Route 82 where you're coming up the hill? All you see is that big school on top of that hill, so you can't tell me that it's not visible. You can check the Twinsburg Old School page, it's an open page on Facebook, anybody can look at it. Not much leasable space. Well, our plan doesn't have to worry about leasing it. We want to use this plan for a community building, as it has been done in other communities, and they are successful, they're solid parts of their community. Oh, I got a nice big picture here. That's a little better than Mr. Finch's picture here. You can't miss that school coming up Route 82. Here's another picture I have from Route 82. You can't miss that school. That was before I had to call the city service department and tell them to rip off this ugly, nasty, dilapidated awning that was intentionally left up to make the building look bad. We had someone who wanted to replace the glass doors at their own cost, so that it doesn't look like a boarded-up property in the inner city. That was refused. So now we got boarded-up doors. You tear out these windows, we're going to have a million boarded-up windows, making the building look even worse, because you're not going to replace the windows. So with all of this in mind, my letter, I am submitting to the Ohio, to the National EPA in regards to this. "In February 2013, I came before Twinsburg City Council to speak on the issue of preservation and renovation of Twinsburg Old School, located at 8997 Darrell Road in Twinsburg, Ohio. Over the next several months, I was joined by many others who believed this building was not only worthy of the renovation, but deserving of preservation because of its historical impact on the community, as to which it has served for years since 1921. Our group became organized and we formed a committee." This is the part that's going to hurt a little bit, so just take it with a grain of salt, guys and ladies. "Our group became organized, formed a committee, the Twinsburg Old School Committee. We were met with great opposition from the mayor, former mayor, all due respect, and most of council during our campaign, but we persevered in our cause. Our committee has remained dedicated and diligent for nearly four years in the efforts of finding oppositions and finding options in the direction of renovating and repurposing this historic symbol of our city. The direction of the city of Twinsburg has never been one of preservation or renovation, but has always been with demolition at the forefront of their efforts. This has not changed to this day. There has never been an application for listing on a national historic register, never any application for historical building renovations or grant funds, and it has never been listed for any kind of lease. The first given, the first reason given for demolition was that the building is full of asbestos. My counter to that statement was that asbestos can be removed through abatement or encapsulated, and we got no reply from city officials on that. The second reason for demolition presented by city officials was major ADA issues, American with Disabilities Act, for those unaware. My reply was that the ADA wooden ramp built by city workers and a chairlift installed on the stairs were compliant for tenants to rent the building for over 15 years and not a reason for demolition." Well, we got no reply from the city. Oddly enough, we did have someone on our committee who is disabled and in a wheelchair who spoke at Twinsburg City Hall was not ADA compliant. And I see we just now got the ramp built here this year, two years later. American with Disabilities Act went into effect in 1991. It was upgraded in 1993 to say that no building is allowed to be grandfather-clawed in, that every public building has to be. And here's our own Twinsburg City Hall, not ADA compliant, and we're worried about tearing down a historic building. That is ADA compliant. "The steel beams are rotted over the windows. I told them brick lenals get often, often get replaced." No reply. "Electrical transformer blew up. That's it for the Old School." One of my council people tells me he gets an email. "I requested public records and found that for less than $6,000, the transformer could be replaced, and we could have electricity probably tomorrow if we were to make that call." Eh, slight exaggeration, but we could have electricity for $6,000 in that building. We've put millions of dollars into that building. Public records that I received show that the city's put in less than $180,000. These are everything that the city gave me, I tallied up to $180,000 in over 18 years that the city has had ownership of the building, less than 10 grand a year. "The building is not historically significant," another reason. "I produced a document saying that the city of Twinsburg has it listed on the city's records as one of Twinsburg's historically significant buildings since 2008. Our city planner argued about the historical significance fact and unfortunately embarrassed himself at this very podium, saying that red brick is not widely used in Twinsburg, as he's standing right in front of a red brick wall in a building with Roman arches on the outside, the exact same construction of the building." So pretty much every reason has been shot down. "I presented several photographs of many public buildings, churches, schools, and even our own city hall constructed of Roman arches and red brick, common with the Western Reserve architectural design style. What does all of this have to do with the Brownfield Grant application? This goes to prove the case that the administration in Twinsburg has, for the last four years and possibly even longer, had absolutely no intention of preserving and restoring, let alone maintaining this historic landmark in our fair city. I've had to call on three different occasions to the building department, twice to get the grass cut, and another time to get the dilapidated awning removed. This is stuff that should be just taken care of. The current administration's only direction with this building is to demolish it, clear the site, and hand it over to favored developers to make huge financial profits. The building is currently listed on Summit County records as having a value of $2.7 million, with an estimated replacement cost of over $16 million. The city plans to demolish this building with city funds for a cost of $500,000 to taxpayers and selling it to a developer they can tap on the shoulder," that's a quote from our city planner, "for $1 million." So we're making a grand total profit of $500,000 on something that's worth 2.7. So we're losing $2.2 million. This plan is documented in the city of Twinsburg's publication Roadmap to the Future, showing the Old School replaced by shopping center and cluster homes. Many of our shopping centers, as I said earlier, have a high percentage of vacancies, and cluster homes have been said to lower existing home values in Twinsburg in an article by our Summit County auditor, Kristin Scalise. "For these and many other reasons, I am opposed to the city of Twinsburg receiving this Brownfield Grant for asbestos abatement. The windows will not be replaced, they will be boarded up and create an appearance of urban blight. Until the city changes their stance and decides to truly act and make efforts in the direction of renovation, I personally don't believe anything that is said about renovations. At least this time, we were honest, and Mr. Finch said demolition, demolition. Last year was the first time I ever heard him utter the words reuse, never once, because he knows that the EPA does not like to give money for demolition, which is why I believe it's going to get shot down again this time. I believe this building that has lasted through 17 United States Presidents, two world wars, the Great Depression, the Korean War conflict, Vietnam, September 11th, can survive this onslaught from our city to destroy our history. In 2021, it will mark its 100th anniversary, and I intend on having it ready for its grand opening. I personally am going to lead this fight, and anyone else who wants to join me. Someone else wants to jump in front of me? Come on, people. I believe in the environmental protections agency's intelligence in this matter to see through this ruse by city officials for financially benefiting favored developing and deny this grants. Respectfully submitted for your review, Michael A. Terrell. Thank you for your time."
I had intended to make a point of order, Sam, and I would like my comments recorded, and as required by the United States EPA. Any comments received and responses to our comments must be attached to the grant. That whole situation has to be attached to the grant. That's my point of order. First of all, in all respect, Mr. Finch, there's been an update to the comment that you made. It says that this new comment is the criteria has been revised to clarify that proposals will be evaluated on the community's engagement activities. Not the community as a whole, as Mr. Finch claimed, the activities of this community. It's been revised, this is the new requirement of the United States EPA. The new activities, this whole school committee, never notified, never informed of a meeting, never requested to attend the meeting. You will be asked in your grant, what have you done to inform the community to participate? What have you done? You've done nothing. You can't get a grant if you don't follow the criteria. It's here. It's not last year's, it's this year's. So I'm just going to briefly try to contain myself. And these are the questions that should be asked. What were the stakeholders' participation regarding their ability to participate tonight? None. You got a two-week notice in the newspaper. The last time, Gary, as you recall, I had to notify you. Put it in the paper, Gary. It's important. Mr. Maestros, you confirmed it and had Mr. Finch put it in the paper. Otherwise, it would not have been put in the paper. This time, it was in the paper. The major factors that you have to point out to the EPA, what major factors have you contributed to the success or shortcoming of notifying the public? You haven't notified the public. Put an ad in the paper that there's a meeting. And I might add that all the comments, all comments must be heard, all comments. And all comments must also include responses from government. That goes along with the grant. Another point of order that I would like to make, and these are all points that I think should have been held in the beginning. What were the goals and the steps of the process? Were they clearly explained to the people that the process of this request would be in order? Was the process competent? No. It couldn't be competent because it never happened. We were never properly informed. And this Old School Committee is a target group that the United States EPA says, "You must involve target groups. That's why we give you grants, so that you have people to come back to us, the United States government." This isn't Summit County, or it isn't Twinsburg City Council. You're asking money from the United States EPA. Several points I want to make, I have a lot of points I want to make, and if I don't make them here tonight, I'll make them at the meeting, or I'll make them at every meeting thereafter. We, I wonder if anyone can tell me that where the grant is, I don't know, but does anybody have the communications that have been sent to the United States EPA from any groups? The last time, you had communications from Summit County, you had it from the TCIC, you had it from some contractors, and how they notified, their letters were dated December the 1st, and the meeting was held December the 8th. So if somebody contacted them and said, "Let us know, give us some support, we need it." Nothing from the Old School Committee, just from the targeted group. And that's something the United States EPA doesn't want. As a matter of fact, they make it very clear that anybody who has input, community organizations do not include local government departments, such as Mr. Finch. He's a planner of the city. Planning departments, districts, offices, local, contractors, the mayor's office, or any elected official. Your input to the United States EPA is secondary. So I just want to make that point. When and how were the communities notified? When and how? If there are letters in that United States EPA grant dated December the 1st, and today's the 6th, I want to know how they were notified. These are all things I want answers to.
Excuse me, are you referring to this grant or last year's grant?
I'm talking about this year's grant.
Thank you.
Hopefully. I haven't seen this year's grant, but if there are answers to make questions, they'll be in the grant. Grant request. Was the process fair? These are all things that have been brought up, these are all in the grant request. Was the process fair? What did the leadership do to make the process fair? What were the factors contributing to the success or the failure of this grant? TCIC, last time, wrote a letter, signed by Mr. Finch, that they were contributing $20,000 to support this. That $20,000 was part of the $300,000 that the taxpayers gave them. They turned around and says, "No, we're going to give you $20,000. We're going to recommend here on this building." And they did. They recommended. They said, "We wholly support the demolition." One last point. The fate of the Old School was determined in 1995 with the deed. It was restricted, it would never be used for anything but a public facility, old school education. That was the fate, and that was appointed by the school board, two members, and it's on the deed. That is the fate, and the restricted deed. It's not to be torn down, it's to be used as a public facility. It was to be maintained. One other thing that's really scary for me is that the TCIC, you, council, delegated them full authority to determine the future of our borders, including eminent domain- delegated them full authority to determine the future of our borders, including eminent domain. Including eminent domain. Because when you delegate your authority to any private group, you delegate all authority. Even though they're not sworn to uphold our laws, and they're not sworn to protect our interests, you give them eminent domain, because that's just the way private corporations are allowed when government turns over to them. Those are just a few of the things. I am upset, I'm extremely upset, because the whole process has been disrupted. Instead of being a civilized hearing, shot down. And my comments, every one of them, I want them to go to the United States EPA. I want them to know that I'm totally against this type. This is mockery. This is mockery when you ask for United States money. So, I just want you to know that I am opposed. And again, the new criteria for this year's grant has been revised to clarify that proposals will be evaluated on the community's engagement. Not in the community's whole representative, they want to tear it down, that's community's engagement, community engagement activities, that's us, that's the old school committee. Thank you.
Good evening, council, good evening, mayor. My name's Regis Brown, and I may get out into topics beyond mitigation, but here we go. As an adjacent property owner to the old school, my wife and I appreciate this opportunity to relay to council and our community our personal experience and perspective regarding both living and working in close proximity to the old school over the past 30 years. Our property is located on the southern border of the old school. We own three other adjacent properties, which are currently occupied by a software development firm, a hearing specialist, a business marketing firm, and a nationally recognized staffing agency. Two residents also live on this property, one with a small child. This property currently produces jobs for over 140 people, and also provides support to the families that depend on their success. Two business owners are longtime Twinsburg residents, and many of their employees are also reside in our city. These owners have made significant investments in their businesses in our community, as well as civic contributions to our schools, chambers, and charities. The buildings these tenants occupy also required significant investments, both time and money. Most of these structures were in advanced state of disrepair, and contributed to the blight prevalent in this area when we initially acquired them. The safety of our tenants and security of our buildings and neighborhood are of the highest priority to us, and should also be of concern to our city officials. We unfortunately have had prior experiences to the cost vacant properties can extract from surrounding businesses and the community at large. Approximately 15 years ago, the daycare facility that was located on the south side of our property ceased operation, the owners moved out, left their buildings unsecured. With the lack of visible activity and an overgrown landscape, the buildings first attracted all types of animals, soon to be followed by trespassers, vandals, and drug users. Unless you've lived next to a drug house, you would not have a true understanding of the potential for loss or injury that create. The constant break-ins and vandalism caused tenants to move out of our buildings and caused our rental company to sustain significant losses in revenue, and our city to lose taxpayers. Because of the constant danger, we made the costly decision to move our family and our construction survey supply business that had been at this location for nearly 20 years. The relocation of established businesses is costly and time-consuming. Loss of sales and customers cost our firm a substantial amount of money. By moving to another city, this relocation also caused the City of Twinsburg to tax revenue received from our 12 employees and the revenues it had received from our successful business. Eventually, the vacant buildings at the daycare property were demolished, and the drug activity and vandalism problems were fortunately stopped. Recently, the United States EPA funded a study to determine the true cost of community vacant properties bring. Here's a quote from their study. "By all accounts, vacant properties are cursed. Just ask anyone who lives next to a drug den, a boarded-up fire trap, or a trash-filled lot. But abandonment often seems beyond the control of local officials, and it rarely incites a sense of urgency beyond the neighbors on the block where it occurs. But the evidence shows that vacant properties are an expense that local governments simply cannot afford, and the expense grows with every year a property remains vacant or abandoned. Such properties produce no or little property tax income, but they require plenty of time, attention, and money. With the departure of Kent State, we have experienced a reappearance of the same crime and vandalism we were forced to deal with a few years back with the vacant daycare. Soon after activity at the old school stopped, we started to notice vagrants and trespassers accessing the property at all times of night. We had motion sensor lights in the backyard area that even when activated only seemed to light their way through the area. A neighbor across Walgreens also described a similar increase in vagrants accessing his property. A few months ago, there was a break-in through the front doors of the old school. Entry through these unsecured doors could easily be accomplished with a rock or brick. A few weeks later, a person attempted to break down the rear entrance door of our building next to the old school. That was at 6 o'clock on a Saturday afternoon when it was still light up. Our tenant was there at the time and met the intruder at the door with a golf club, and fortunately was able to scare him away. The intruder exited back towards the old school. I am especially concerned for two of our female tenants who own and operate commercial businesses on this property. It is not uncommon for them to find them working alone, after-hours, in late evening, and on weekends. Although I've added additional lighting and security systems, it is apparent that these vandals and criminals are willing to take risks to gain entry into properties. The EPA study previously mentioned also found that crime rates on blocks with open abandoned buildings were twice as high as rates on blocks without open buildings. The study also found that all businesses surrounding these buildings, especially those within 500 feet, are at risk. The area around the perimeter of the old school property includes Giant Eagle Parking Lot, Walgreens, the Cash Advance Company, and a children's daycare at the site of the old post office. With the robbery of a woman in Giant Eagle Parking Lot a while ago, and two robberies of the Cash Advance facility, we believe that addressing the issue of vacant buildings, especially in the very center of our community, should be of the highest priority in attempt to prevent these dangerous events. The potential for arson and accidental fires should also be of utmost concern when discussing dangers of vacant buildings. The U.S. Fire Administration reported that over 12,000 fires in vacant structures are reported each year in the U.S., resulting in 73 million in property damage annually. The National Fire Protection Association estimates that 6,000 firefighters are injured every year in vacant or abandoned building fires. In 1999, firefighters in Worcester, Mass. entered a vacant cold storage building that was aflame to search for a homeless couple reported to have been in the building. Two firefighters became disoriented, and others went to their aid. Six became trapped and died in the fire. The homeless couple had left the premises after the fire began. The firefighter's death became national news as one of the major causes of vacant properties became all too clear. Our city has been discussing the future status of the old school for nearly 25 years. This building has now been sitting vacant for nearly five years, and the plan we are discussing this evening is to apply for another asbestos mitigation grant. 12 months ago, this same grant application was proposed by our city, and it should be assumed that there is no guarantee that this year's grant application will be approved. Leaving this building and property unsecured for another day, let alone another six to 12 months, is unacceptable. Furthermore, it is of our opinion that the building clearly falls under the definition of a public nuisance, outlined in Ohio Revised Code 376741. Currently, there are approximately 40 glass windows and at least four glass doors on the first floor of the old school, and by leaving them unsecured would continue to allow easy access by vandals and criminals. These accidents point should be secured, similarly to the recent front door repair and fortification. We also believe the chain link fencing should be added to block access to the site and building. Security lighting and regularly scheduled police patrol should also be added. Securing the building should be considered a short-term solution. The danger and negative economic impact this building brings to our community as a proven public nuisance should be avoided at all costs, and plans for its ultimate demolition should proceed. Our tenants enjoy both the location, convenience, and the unique character our properties have provided, and our city units and its residents benefit from the substantial contributions of both taxes and job creation these productive citizens and their businesses provide. To allow or intentionally cause the delay of plans in implementation of actions required to secure the safety of our citizens, as well as our police and fire safety forces, is also unacceptable. I hereby request that council provides us with the detailed plan of actionable remedies for these concerns, and include an ultimate solution to eliminate this hazard to which our citizens and community have been unnecessarily exposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. Most of you know me, my name is Lori Sossala-Fasina, I live on Cannon Road, so not directly by the old school, but close enough. I'll be very brief, but I will be very direct. And I come to this both as a businesswoman and someone who is fairly familiar with environmental regulations. My sister, a graduate of Twinsburg High School, was one of the youngest directors at the U.S. EPA in Washington, DC. So, I understand the terminology, and I will stay on point to the remediation that you're talking about.
Thank you.
But again, I will go on board with the last two speakers prior to this gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot her name, Mr. Regis, and tell you that there are rules that you have to follow when you submit an application of this sort. And you shouldn't play with a federal governmental agency. If your intent is to get this remediation as a stepping stone to demolishing this building, you're not reading the grant application correctly. It reads, "The EPA Brownfields Grant Proposal Guidelines require applicants to provide letters of commitment from community organizations involved in the applicant's project." I, it also tells me that we are supposed to have a draft of this application available to us at this meeting tonight. Has anyone had a?
Available.
There. Okay, all right, well, I'll take one, I'll take one. Available to us. But again, let me repeat, the proposal guidelines require applicants to provide letters of commitment from community organizations involved in the applicant's project. I don't think that you can just dismiss the old school committee and pretend that they don't exist. They are community stakeholders. We are residents, we pay taxes. And, Mr. Regis, this wouldn't be a blight if the council and the former mayor had not abdicated their authority and their requirement to take care of these properties. It wouldn't be a problem. It's become a problem, and it's designed to keep this building in disrepair so that when the true reason for this application becomes a four-point, you'll know what's going on. If you're going to do this grant, you need to do it within the confines of the law. And if you don't, I'm telling you, I'm very quiet, I've been in this council chamber one prior time in my 30 years of residency here. I was born in this city, grew up in an adjacent city, both of my parents graduated from this building that we're talking about. I have no reason to believe that we could not rehabilitate this building and still move forward with the progress that a lot of other shareholders want to see happen. Progress is fine, but bulldozing history in order to edify that aim is going to make no friends for any of you, and it's not going to be taken lightly from a legal standpoint. You have to follow the law. The criterion that Sally was talking about has been revised to clarify the proposal will be evaluated based on the community engagement activities. So, you're right, Sally, you're exactly dead-on. You can, I'm assuming that all of you have read these notes on this grant proposal. And it also indicates that it is an imperative that the notice must state the time and place of a public meeting, and must indicate a draft of the grant proposal will be available for comment, and any comments received and responses to those comments must be attached as part of each cleanup grant proposal. So, I would compel you, and if you don't have copies of this, come to me, or I guess to Sally, and get a copy of it before you sign off on this proposal. If the intent is that you are getting this remediation as a stepping stone to demolition, then you are not following the intent of the grant, by any stretch of the imagination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Again, we'll try to be brief. Miss Sally pointed out that my comments to be recorded for the purpose of the grant.
State your name, please.
My name is John Huda, address is 10072 Prozeness Cove, Remigerville. And I'm also representing my sister, who is in the Meadowwoods. She couldn't be here today, she will be here at any subsequent meetings. Last year, to begin with, last year, I distributed a summary of a report that was done by the Army Corps of Engineers from Buffalo when we had the flood in 1969, but also had a flood in 1959. Neither of those were determined to be the 100-year flood. 100-year flood is most likely 2013 were overdue. 1913 was the last thing that could be considered a 100-year flood in Summit County. That being said, the Army Corps of Engineers had guidelines in there, things that needed to be done. There were supposed to be retainments, ponds put in, there were supposed to be embankments increased, and there was supposed to be minimized construction. This is way before all of the construction that happened at 1,000, over 100 feet higher than the crack level. We have put in industrial parks, we have put in housing, we've put in commercial, all-around feeding tinkers prick. By FEMA's and the USGS's guidelines or estimates, the FEMA map can actually be two and a half times brighter than what it is the flooding. And I know that council already acknowledges that there are homes that are in danger in Glenwood. There will be many more homes in danger, as well as tinkers laying will be inundated. There will be property damage, and hopefully, there won't be much physical damage, if you will. Back to the grant, though. I hope that this is not the meeting, or not the summation of all of the meetings that are supposed to occur to involve the community. Number one, this type of meeting is more of an inquisition, people standing up here and not having a conversation, okay? That, I don't believe that that is what the EPA is indicating when they say "community involvement" and meetings. Relative to the facility itself, so, I guess my question is, and I don't know if I'll get an answer tonight, but I expect there's going to be more meetings before the 20th, because I believe... because I believe that everybody here that has come and wants to speak and wants to submit something will be submitted before the twentieth, as well as after the twentieth. That was done last year after the twentieth, and I believe it had an impact on how you were not awarded the last time. Relative to finances, I'm glad that Mr. Finch claims that it's fifty-four thousand square feet. Fifty-four thousand square feet today for that facility with an auditorium and gymnasium with brick construction at $300 a square foot is $16.2 million. There is an armistice means online seminar that's going on tomorrow that you're all welcome. I will send you the link to it, but I will be watching it to see what all of the 2017 regulations are going to increase that $300 per square foot, too. So the facility in proper condition, whatever that is, and that's subject to debate, is worth $16.2 million, not 2.3. 2.3 is an assessed value by tax currently. And of course, we all know we like our homes assessed at a low value for tax purposes, okay? That's what that is. While I'm on it, FEMA and FEMA's projections for flooding are way underestimated because they have come under a lot of scrutiny, a lot of lawsuits for people claiming that they have damaged the value of their house by putting them in the flood plain. FEMA is very underestimated, and FEMA's projections do not in any way include all of the additional runoff that comes in every direction from the top of 91, top of 82, top of Cannon Rowan Hill, and top of 91 in the other direction. So the value of the property, replacement value, would be $16.2 million. There was an outlandish range of what it would cost to put it into use, and that was $4 million to $8 million. I challenge anybody to go put their house on the market and say it's listed for $400,000 to $800,000. How many people are you going to get to buy into an estimate like that? There needs to be a true estimate of what the upgrades, of what we think the upgrades, what the necessary upgrades, not the outlandish upgrades, what the necessary upgrades need to be. Michael mentioned several that have been repurposed. Murray Hill has been repurposed and a fabulous art center. If you haven't been there, I encourage you to get to Murray Hill. Drive through Manaway. Wilson Carlet, just recently, in the last year and a half, has repurposed the Manaway School. It's a brick building, looks just like ours, which, talk about image, I'm sorry, but the image of the old school to many people is stable, okay? It's not important. The old school is majestic to many of us, and it should be treated that way. As far as the window, number one, before I get into that, the amount of asbestos, can I get a copy of your...
The asphalt.
Okay. The asbestos that is identified as not being needed to be touched or replaced is about ninety percent of the asbestos. Just doing a quick calculation. The windows, half of them have already been replaced to make the building occupiable. Not occupiable, it's already occupiable. Kent left it and was occupied, and they have no problem. They did a lot of improvements there. But the rest of the windows should be replaced for energy, and you can get grants, I'm sure, for doing that. There are a lot more dollars, potential grants, to repurpose that school than there is to tear it down. Structural issue, I don't need it right now, but I would love to have a breakdown of what these structural issues are. And if it is the roof that is a major structural issue, number one, it's been reported that there's leaks. I've been through the building three times since Kent left. There's no evidence of leaks. The city has, and I know you're frustrated, and I know you're very frustrated because you have practiced demolition by neglect. However, that wonderful school has stood up to you and has stood up to the time and stood up to the weather and the seasons, even though you turned off the electricity, you turned off the heat and everything else. So I have a lot of other things that I would like to submit, and I guess I submit them to you, Shannon.
I can take them.
I'm sorry?
I can take them.
Okay. I will submit them to you. One last question is, does the email system in the city work? Are you capable, able to receive emails? And are you able to send emails? I ask that of every council member and mayor. I sent twenty-three emails, didn't get a single reply. My sister brought in thirteen letters, took them to every department, didn't get a single reply. So all of that, as far as communications and cooperations with the community, that is all going to go into a letter to the EPA. Any questions?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Regina Wolfe, and I live on East Attlewood in Parkside Commons. I know Maureen and Bill, good to see you. Merry Christmas, everybody. I am essentially an outsider to Twinsburg. However, I had a family that lived here on Maple Drive for over fifty-five, actually more than that, about a hundred years. Most of you know Virginia Flaherty. She was my aunt. I am related to Terry, Trent, Manley, Kerwin, and Kennard Ford. I am their cousin. I spent many a summer out here. I chose to live in Twinsburg when I was twelve years old. Told my mom, "I'm moving to Twinsburg." And I said, "Well, okay, let us know when you get there." I moved here in 2001, and I absolutely love it. I love where I live. I love my neighborhood. I love the community. But I will tell you, I'm very disappointed in the lack of historical preservation in our city. Hudson does it. You can't put a sign in Hudson without the proper zoning. And when you come into Twinsburg, it looks like Streetsboro. It's starting to look like Streetsboro. Whatever you decide to do with the school, you have to take the asbestos out of it, whether you demolish it, demolish it, or sell it to some developer. So you have a community that wants to save it, who work with us, will help. Solon did it, and other people have done it. I still love Twinsburg. It's still a great place to live. And I'd really like to see a lot more historical preservation in this Western Reserve city that was founded in, I forget the date, I should know. I'm part of the, I did the Locust Grove Cemetery thing. But I really wish it'd give it a good listen to. These are fine people, and as are you. I don't know if I would do what you do, but I do know that it is a tough job. It's a very tough job. But we want to see the city keep the school and keep a lot more historical preservation in the city. So those are all my comments. So thank you all, and have a great Christmas.
Thank you, too, Ms. Wolfe. Anybody else?
I want to ask Larry one. I want to ask one.
Yeah, then it would be better.
We all done?
No, we're moving on to miscellaneous. Okay, anybody have anything under miscellaneous?
Yeah.
Mr. Steele.
Mr. Finch. If I get this right, if we get the grant, you said we have to pay twenty percent, right? And, but your estimates, one, the low estimate was at 236, and the high estimate to do everything was at 250. So we could actually end up being on the short end of 86. Am I right?
No. We'd end up paying $50,000 if it were a $250,000 grant.
Okay. Okay. So that's within the upper limits of the grant?
Right.
How high, what is the top limit?
$200,000 is the maximum. $200,000 is the maximum for asbestos mitigation.
Okay. So it's not $200,000 minus twenty percent of the $200,000?
No. We can get $200,000 in grant money, but we have to ante up fifty percent, I'm sorry, twenty percent.
Of that amount?
Right. Which is...
So they don't subtract the twenty percent from the total?
No, that's on top of, that's a match. That's a match.
Okay. All right. And then I have one other. Mike, Mr. Carroll. You mentioned asbestos abatement was different to preserve a building as opposed to tear it down. Now, please, the two-minute version.
I'm going to only respond very precisely and shortly.
What's the difference? Because I would think it would be just as well if we take the whole thing down.
The short story, if you are looking to renovate the building, you're not going to go in and rip and strip and destroy the walls and everything. You are going to remove the windows. If you are going for demolition with that knowledge, you don't care what you destroy in the process.
Okay.
That's as good as I can say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Finch, is that what you find to be true as well?
Yes, and simple, that's correct. And I tried to make that point with the ranking of the alternatives and the description of the three alternatives we looked at. The second one was that partial mitigation, where you leave things that are not friable, that can be left in place. But as I tried to explain also in that same scenario, if you do that and you decide to rehab the building, and you come back in and you have a floor plan, then you have to, you need to move walls, do other construction, and you expose asbestos, you bring asbestos contractors back in, you spend more money, and you take care of the issues. So it really depends specifically on a redevelopment plan for the building. So that's why the costs I had were in a range in general, and at that point, at this point, that's really all we could...
Thank you.
No.
Okay.
The resident... Mr. Regis.
He just...
To begin with the...
Do you? Did you ask me a question?
To begin with the facility, it was occupable in 2012. It was safe for occupation in 2012. Removing more than needs to be done will make it undesirable to somebody else who wants to buy it. The property has not been listed for lease, sale, or purchase since 2012. It has robbed the city and the taxpayers of revenues, possible revenues, revenues that could have been put into maintaining the roof, which is an annual thing in any building. And every single facility in Twinsburg built before 1977 has the type of asbestos Larry was mentioning. So minimal should be done. It should be listed right now. It should have been listed for the last four years. Let the people who want to buy it decide what they want to do with it. If they say this needs to be done, then go ahead and get a grant, do it, and then go ahead and put it back up for sale.
Council, any other miscellaneous?
Yeah, I got...
I have a question for Larry.
Go ahead.
Larry.
Larry, your outline of the stakeholders, when I read that, I thought you were talking about their general proximity to the school, not necessarily a priority. Can you clarify that?
It's proximity and impact, and that would be a priority.
Right.
One other thing, with regard to the purpose of this meeting and the public participation, this is the very early stage. We're in the application part, and in the public hearing announcement, it was the availability of this ABCA document was noted, and encourage people to get copies of that document and make comments. We have the document here. We encourage people to make comments.
What is the application due?
It's due on the twentieth.
So we have less than two weeks to react on this whole...
Yeah, which are reacting to...
We're not...
We're not doing a plan on the issue, and I don't want to be in an argument with my colleagues.
Go ahead.
If I can conclude with my remarks, the ABCA document is to be available for comments by residents and primarily by the stakeholders. Those comments can be submitted up to the time we submit the application. All the comments will be submitted, along with the application to EPA. That's just the beginning of the process. The other elements of public engagement happen after the grant is awarded, and we have a, there's a section in the application that deals with public engagement, includes a meeting with the opposition, it includes a meeting with all the stakeholders in the area, and resolving the issues regarding asbestos mitigation. So that's basically what's required by the application, by US EPA, and we are totally in compliance with the process and the procedures with the US EPA.
Thank you.
Larry, one more question, Larry, from Mr. Steele.
I have one more to ask. In my take on when we were talking about stakeholders being participants in this, I'm just thinking, in removal of the asbestos, or is that stakeholders are participants in the overall plan that where we're going to go? Because it doesn't seem to me that we need to have stakeholders as participants in why we're taking out asbestos. I just don't understand, if you have an overall plan, they should be participants in that, and this should be part of that overall plan, but we don't.
US EPA basically requires that you have, you identify the impacted stakeholders, those who are adjacent.
Right, but shouldn't it be as part of the overall plan of where the building going? Because it makes no sense to me if we don't know the end game on this, that it would make...
I understand what you're saying. But they're specifically interested in concerns related to asbestos mitigation. Now, that can be pretty broad, because if you do it one way, it's a minimal asbestos mitigation with the building staying intact. You do it the other way, it's a more invasive asbestos mitigation with the potential for It's in our best interest to make the application for as much money as we can get, and then if we don't, if we choose after the stakeholders meeting and after we get the grant, and we go through the community engagement process, that that's really not the way we're going to go, then we have the option of using the money for the minimally invasive asbestos removal or going forward with total asbestos removal. And a large part of the community engagement happens after you grant, after you get the grant, according to the procedures you've identified in the grant application. That is exactly what this grant application says. I'm sorry.
Finch, you have the floor. That's it. Any council, any other comments? You're done. Any other comments? Ms. Lanys over there? Mayor?
Nothing for me.
Good? Okay. Meeting adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll go on to our next meeting. Anybody that spoke this evening, please come up to Shannon and sign in. She needs you on the sign-in sheet.